Okay, Board members, please come to the table. This March 10, 2016, regular meeting number 15 of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the Westfield High School Guitar Ensemble under the direction of Kenneth Hall. That's beautiful, thank you. First order of business, we will do our certification of closed-meeting compliance. In order to comply with Section 2.237-12D of the Code of Virginia, it's necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on March 10, 2016, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Evans, seconded by Ms. Strauss, all those in favor? Darrenette Kofax, McElvein, Huff, Strauss, Corbett Sanders, Evans, Hines, Moon, and Palchuk. Those opposed and abstaining? Ms. Schultz abstaining, okay. Item 2.02, announcements. A few announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. You may access tonight's agenda and related meeting documents by going to the FCPS website, select "School Board," and then "Upcoming Meetings and Agendas." The meeting is also being streamed live on the FCPS website homepage. Click on "Watch School Board Live." Please turn off or silence your cellphones. I call on Mr. Press for announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A few announcements this evening. The Board will be recognizing Theater in Our Schools Month in March. The American Alliance for Theater and Education has designated March as Theater in Our Schools Month to celebrate and increase public awareness of the benefits of theater education for youth development. The theme is fostering a culture of creativity. Theater education has the power to raise academic achievement and to stimulate innovation and creativity among students. The Alliance encourages citizens to celebrate the positive impact of theater in the classroom and to remember that all students should have access to quality theater education in their lives. Secondly, the Board will be recognizing National Sleep Awareness Week from March 6th to 13th, which is something that strikes particularly close to home for me. The National Sleep Foundation is celebrating its annual Sleep Awareness Week, March 6th through the 13th, to raise awareness of the health benefits of sleep and its importance to safety and productivity. Most of us know that getting a good night's sleep is important, but too few of us actually make those eight or so hours a priority. So many of us have forgotten what being really, truly rested feels like. To further complicate matters, stimulants like coffee and energy drinks, alarm clocks, and external lights, including those from electronic devices, interfere with our natural sleep-wake cycle. Sleep needs vary across ages and are especially impacted by lifestyle and health. To determine how much sleep you need, it's important to examine what lifestyle factors are affecting the quality and quantity of your sleep, such as work schedules and stress. Most importantly, make sleep a priority and don't make it the thing you do only after everything else is done. Stop doing other things till you get the sleep you need. For more information on healthy sleep, visit the National Sleeps Foundation website at sleep.org. Third, Music in Our Schools Month, also in March. March has been officially designated by the National Association for Music Education for the observance of Music in Our Schools Month, a time of year when music education becomes the focus of schools across the nation. This year's theme is "Music Inspires" and is designed to highlight the importance of comprehensive sequential music education taught by exemplary music educators for all children, and to remind citizens that school is where all children should have access to music. It also is an opportunity for music teachers to bring their music programs to the attention of the school and community and to display the benefits school music brings to the students of all ages. And finally, Youth Art Month in March. Art education contributes powerful educational benefits to all elementary and secondary students. Art education develops students' creative, problem-solving, and critical-thinking abilities, teaches sensitivity to beauty, order, and other expressive qualities, gives students a deeper understanding of multicultural values and beliefs, and brings to life what students learn in other subjects. The theme for Youth Art Month 2016 is "The Power of Art." The Fairfax County School Board believes that support should be given to art teachers as they strengthen art education in schools and communities, and all citizens are urged to take an interest in and give full support to quality art programs for children and youth. We also are joined this evening by a few Boy Scouts in the audience from Troop 993 and Troop 702. Thank you so much for being here. You want to stand up so we can recognize you?
Thank you, Mr. Press. Item 2.03, the resolution requesting the Commonwealth of Virginia recognize the significant use of and impact on public schools supporting the March 1, 2016 Presidential Primary. That item has been removed from the agenda at this time and will be considered at a later date. Item 3.01, citizen participation. Speakers, we have two speakers tonight. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. The School Board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries, or personal attacks on any person. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. If the concern is a group concern, please consider appointing a spokesperson, and while the spokesperson is speaking, those in support may stand to show their support. Tonight, two citizens have signed up to address the Board. First will be Mr. Steve Greenberg, followed by Carol Grant.
Dr. Garza, Chairman, Hines, esteemed School Board members, legendary Mr. Press, my name is Steve Greenberg. I'm president of the Fairfax County Federation of Teachers. I represent outstanding educators in FCPS, those who care about our children, educating, protecting daily. I will be speaking this evening in regards to Gen. Item 6.02, which is the revised audit plan. I'm also here to take the time to thank a few of our advocates out there. Please know that FCFT supports that the School Board approved the revised audit plan as detailed in the agenda item. I noticed that one key point that is driving these proposed amendments to the audit plan is facilitating the use of limited resources in the Office of Auditor General. To be clear, when our school system is underfunded, it compromises our ability to do work in the best way, the way we would choose. Instead, we have to settle for less than ideal. That's no way to run an audit, and that's no way to run a school system. FCFT appreciates that supervisors Dan Stork, John Faust, and Kathy Smith understand that concept, that underfunded schools cannot possibly perform as well as those that are provided with the necessary resources. It's just common sense. FCFT was not fooled by the political shell game that recently occurred at the supervisor level. We understand that only Dan Stork, John Faust, and Kathy Smith truly care about our students, and therefore, we're the ones willing to stick their necks out to protect them. We also realize that their courage as county supervisors needs to be recognized and valued. Thank you to all of them, and that the incompetence and insensitivity of the rest of that county Board is now even more obvious. FCFT thanks Dr. Garza and Dr. Ramey for agreeing to our recent 45-10 meeting to have HR write the non-binding county teacher intent form for next year. Dr. Ramey's offer to alleviate our overworked principals from this task, which will also help us to collect better division data on staffing intentions, which is what they were supposed to be used for to begin with, is appreciated. I have confidence that HR can produce that form to help us retain staff and that your principals will appreciate that. I would like to thank Ms. Schultz, Ms. Huff, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Corbett Sanders, and Ms. Evans for meeting with our members this past weekend to discuss potential compensation scale adjustments, and we look forward to seeing many of the rest of you this weekend. They've been powerful meetings as they've brought better understanding and empathy to this School Board as to what the needs of your teachers are. We thank you for taking that time to do it. Finally, I would like to thank Dr. Garza for coming in recently and spending time with my students during Read Across America Week. Generally, I try to keep my professional worlds separated, but I will not on this occasion. Let me just say this, for as happy as I am to work with Karen Garza, Superintendent, please know how much even more proud I am to work for Dr. Karen Garza as a third-grade teacher. Your love of our children, to watch you with those kids, it was precious, it was priceless. Karen, you, you're a real leader. Thank you to all the School Board members who met with me, by the way, over the last few weeks. I came in and addressed an issue with you about transparency, and I feel much more comfortable about that now. So mostly, I'll just end by saying you all have a wonderful, happy, and restful spring break. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Carol Grant?
Good evening, and thank you for your time tonight. My name is Carol Grant. I have two children in the Fairfax County school system, one at Lake Braddock and one at Keene Mill. I stand before you tonight, today, with a concern focused on equal access for all students at all schools to STEM courses offered at the Career and Technical Education Academy. A specific case is access to the cyber curriculum. My Lake Braddock student is trying to access the cyber routing and switching Cisco course, which is only offered at two academies, Chantilly and Marshall. This course is not offered at the Edison Academy. I understand that shuttles are supplied to the academies, however, these shuttle services are not being offered at each location and are therefore unreliable. All academies should offer all courses as it gives the STEM-minded students greater opportunities to expand without a compromise to core studies and other activities related to their home school. It is frustrating for technically-minded individuals to see opportunities for steady certifications and pathways to information technology careers being hindered by lack of equal access to STEM courses. Now that you understand my concern and the problem it creates, not only for my child but others, I have some suggested courses of action to fix this problem. One, continue as is, no results. Offer all STEM courses at all academies. Offer all STEM courses at all academies by use of video teleconference services. Maintaining the status quo is unacceptable for a county and country that prides itself on a strong STEM initiative and support structure. I also understand that money is limited, and multiple instructors at multiple locations will cost more. This is why I strongly recommend that the third course of action, offer all STEM courses by means of VTC. This is a minimal investment in technology that will greatly benefit those who want to learn more about technology, the sciences, and cyber. In closing, I hope that we can find a mutually acceptable solution to help all students have equal access to all STEM course material. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Okay, item 3.02, Student Representative Matters. We go back to Mr. Press?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will begin my remarks this evening by speaking to our FY 2017 budget situation. As I'm sure many people around this table were, I was disappointed and dismayed in the outcome of the Board of Supervisors' March 1st meeting. While the vote on the advertised tax rate was close, the Board ultimately voted on the side of underfunding critical county and school needs and decided to deprive the community of the conversation around the budget that it was entitled to. I am saddened and upset that the cut list that my colleagues and I on the Budget Task Course assembled over the course of the last year will likely be drawn back into the light, this time for potential implementation. I had hoped it would never be this way, but this is the reality that we find ourselves in. With that said, I'd like to take a moment to thank our state legislative delegation for their very hard work in Richmond this session. Thanks to their hard work, it looks like we'll be receiving more funds from the state than we had expected, but likely not enough to cover our range of needs. In a state in the top 10 in median income, this cannot stand. I hope they will continue to this fight into the future. Underfunding education in this state is not how we empower student learning and achievement. This message struck particularly hard today when I was visiting Key Center School. At this school, they have struggled to find teachers to fill critical vacancies and find qualified paraprofessionals to assist them in their mission of providing students with intense needs the resources that they require. Principal Ann Smith graciously showed me what a great job that she was able to do with such limited resources, but it shouldn't have to be this way. Whether it's immersion, special education, or needs-based staffing, we cannot cut our way to excellence. While I do not look forward to them, I will be actively participating in our upcoming budget conversations, and I hope we can work together to reduce the negative impact of any cuts we may have to implement. Moving on, I was glad today to participate in today's Student Advisory Council meeting at Hayfield Secondary. We were able to conclude our work on two very important focus topics, mental health and grading policy. I wanted to particularly discuss the grading policy portion of what the group talked about today. Ms. Klemenko from our Instructional Services Department came and gave us a presentation briefly on a survey that was provided to all high school students about grading and homework load. The data was very, very powerful. The 7,200 respondents indicated some interesting trends from across our division, and while that data has not been released to the public yet, I will be sharing that with the Board as soon as we can. One piece I did want to share with you, though, is a particularly interesting statistic that says over 60% of those surveyed indicated that their homework loads were greater than two hours per night, which I think is very powerful as we speak more about the student stress piece. With that said, I'm hoping those students are able to take some time off from homework and get outside on these beautiful days we've been having. I'd like to pass on a special note of thanks to Mr. Jeff Plattenberg for calling in every weather favor he could to get us a few days of 80 degrees and sunny. Hopefully, we can finally retire #closeFCPS for this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Press. I am reminded again of how fortunate we are to have your service at the table. Item 3.03, we have a spotlight on learning, secondary transition to employment program. I call on Dr. Garza.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. It's always great when we have the opportunity to highlight these wonderful programs we have in all of our schools across the division, and tonight is a wonderful opportunity to do just that. Tonight, our spotlight will be presented by Ann Long, and she's joined by a number of other people tonight. She is the coordinator of our Career and Transition Services. You're going to be pleased and proud with what you hear about tonight. This is our Secondary Transition to Employment Program, otherwise known as STEP, and we actually have some students with us as well tonight, so I'm very excited about that. We have Brian McMahan, right, close, from Chantilly High School; Husam Karachi from South Lakes; Cory Woods, also from South Lakes; and then we have a number of our school leaders, our wonderful school leaders with us here tonight, Teresa Johnson, who's the principal at Chantilly High School; Dr. Anthony Terrell, who was the principal at Rocky Run Middle School but has been recently named the principal at Mount Vernon High School; we also have Mr. Tim O'Reilly, who is one of the assistant principals at Chantilly High School; and Ms. Mary Beth Harrison Cunningham, who's an AP at Mount Vernon High School. So we're very delighted to introduce to you the program tonight about our Secondary Transition Employment Program, and I invite Ann Long to the podium to please introduce anyone that I missed and also to set the stage for the video that we have tonight. Thank you, Ann.
There are a few other people here that I do want to recognize, but first, I want to say that Brian is actually a student at Mount Vernon, not at Chantilly, so I want to make sure that you note that in your notes. We also have a number of teachers with us as well. We have Blair Kirsch, who is the STEP teacher at Mount Vernon, and then we have two of the teachers from South Lakes, Nancy Taylor and Suzie Huffman; and then we have Kristen Hassan Wheeler, who is one of the teachers at Chantilly, so we thank them for coming as well. And we have two of our employment and transition representatives, Amanda Dorr and Teresa Clausen Keaton, and they are folks that support those programs as well. So thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to showcase the Secondary Transition to Employment Program. In 2007, FCPS started the first STEP program at Chantilly High School as a satellite site for Davis and Polley Career Centers. We currently have three STEP sites at Chantilly, South Lakes, and Mount Vernon High Schools that work with 54 students from 18 different high schools. The goal of the STEP program is to provide further instruction for students who have completed their academic requirements but would benefit from additional training and instruction focused on employability and independent living skills to become independent and productive citizens in their communities upon graduation. This model incorporates work-based learning to provide students with relevant and practical experience in entry-level work situations. This provides students with exposure to careers and helps them to hone their post-secondary goals as they develop strengths, interests, skills, and continue to develop attributes outlined in our Portrait of a Graduate. Our goal is to increase each student's potential for positive employment outcomes. Since its inception, 82% of the students that have exited the program have entered directly into paid employment or further career training. Partnerships with the business community are critical to helping our students achieve these outcomes, and the STEP program alone partners with 32 businesses that provide work experiences or internships to the students. The video that you are about to see highlights students from both Mount Vernon and South Lakes STEP programs, and the Chantilly STEP program was featured in two previous videos that you can see on our CTS public website. After the viewing, we'll be happy to address any questions that you might have, and I'm going to ask the students to come up to do that. So go ahead and roll the video.
A partnership between local businesses and FCPS, the STEP program provides students with special needs a real opportunity to explore employment as a post-secondary option when they graduate.
Some of the skills that we really hope that the students learn while they're engaged in the STEP program really fall in line with the Portrait of a Graduate, so being able to communicate well with others, being a good team player, having really good executive functioning skills, problem solving, some of those soft skills that an employer might look for as they're actually hiring people for the openings that they might have available.
FCPS has three STEP sites at Chantilly, South Lakes, and Mount Vernon High Schools and currently collaborates with 32 local employers. The Bureau of Safety and Environmental Enforcement, or BESI, is one of those sites. Aldo Berto, along with Cory and Husam, have been working in the Human Resources Department at BESI since the fall.
I'm an intern for a human resource assistant. I did learn is to use the computer, you know, type down the person's name and, you know, their back, trying to, you know, like, figure out where their, you know, history and stuff, you know, researching documents and, you know, like, put them in the Excel spreadsheet.
Aldo Berto, really nice student to work with, very bright. What he is doing for us right now is going through our performance ratings and getting those into the Electronic Official Personnel folder, which we keep on every federal employee under our servicing assignment, and he's been very diligent and is very good at his work.
Another supporting organization is Inova Mount Vernon Hospital. Providing Inova Mount Vernon Hospital staff and visitors with delicious meals and assuring supplies are fully stocked are DeAngelo and Brian.
My job is I work in the Materials Management Department. Typical day for me is go to the mailroom and get the mail to deliver to the interesting clinic on the second floor and bring some back if they have any. Sometimes my coworkers will ask me to go to the utility room on each floor and get these little machines they have in the bag and bring them down and clean them and then put them back on the shelves.
We kind of have three goals that are important to us. Number one is that the student have a positive experience. Number two is that they leave the positions that they filled here in the hospital, taking away a skill that they can build on and possibly parallel into employment or either another successful volunteer program somewhere else. And then our biggest goal for them is for them to have employment.
The STEP program is helping to build self-confidence and life skills that will help students reach their full potential and become successful, independent members of the community.
Again, thank you so much for allowing us to showcase the program. We're very proud of what's happened with the business partnerships that we have, and Mount Vernon Hospital this year actually was awarded the Martha E. Glennon Inclusion Award from Fairfax County, so we were very proud of them as well. They've been very helpful in getting us up and rolling with that Mount Vernon site. So does anyone have questions? Would you like me to have the students come up?
Yes, you would introduce the students, right?
Okay. Brian?
My name is Brian McMahon, and I go to Mount Vernon High School.
My name is Husam, and I go to South Lakes High School.
My name is Cory, and I go to South Lakes High School.
Thank you all for being here. Why don't you stay up front? I think some Board members have questions. Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Long, I have a couple of questions regarding your program. Is there a limitation on the number of students you can take in the program? Because obviously, you may need to have some sponsors, potential employers to train them, is that...
You know, space seems to be really the issue that limits the number of students that we can have in a program, but we have not had a situation at this point where we've had to limit the number of kids who are accepted into the program.
Okay. Could you also tell us how many students in total you have in the program?
We have 54 at the three sites currently. Right now, we're expecting that Mount Vernon will grow fairly quickly because we have seven schools that actually feed into that location.
Okay, thank you. It's a wonderful program. Thank you.
Well, I have a question then for the students. So maybe I missed it. So you are high school students now in your schools? Okay. Okay, so maybe one or all of you might come up and say, give us some thoughts about where you hope to end up after high school? What you're thinking of for your own career?
I hope to get a job that has my artistic interests, like photography, painting, or just those two.
Thank you. Others?
Hope to get a job with good benefits.
Right, don't we all?
I hope to get a job in, like, office environment using, like, data entry and, like, filing and stuff like that.
Great, wonderful. And it looks like the work that you're doing now is helping prepare you for those jobs. So, good job.
I just, again, want to thank you, Ann, and everyone that came. If you're a part of these programs, if you'd stand, please, so that we could acknowledge you. These are such important programs because our students graduate from high school. It would be very difficult for them to find employment without some kind of support. So this provides them the opportunity, not only to learn job skills, but to have that kind of support so that they can be successful. So we're indebted and very thankful. To the students, you're all very impressive. We're very proud of you. But we know these wonderful people are, have been a great support to you too. So we're very proud of the program, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you all very much. Item 4.01, action items. 4.01, the fiscal year 2016 third quarter budget review. I call on Ms. Strauss for the motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I move that the school board approve revenue and expenditure adjustments as reflected in the FY 2016 third quarter budget review as detailed in the agenda item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Darnett Kofax. Ms. Strauss, do you want to speak to your motion?
This was brought two weeks ago, and it was also, board members had an opportunity to discuss it at a work session. And the recommendation is to leave unspent any revenues that are one-time revenues, and therefore to push it forward for a decision later on. We're also reminded of the need, there will be another need for a beginning balance in FY 2018. So I encourage my colleagues to vote for it as proposed.
Hey, Ms. Darnett Kofax?
Really not much more, other than we, as Ms. Strauss said, we had the opportunity to discuss this. And I agree that the available funds remain unallocated at this time.
Okay, and we have had time to look at this and talk about it as a board. Dr. Garza, did you want to add anything?
Yes, and we have, the board has been notified that we do now qualify for FEMA relief for snow removal. So we are submitting. That has been, we learned that since our work session. You received a notice by our staff, I think today or yesterday. So we will be submitting, I mean, all the costs associated with snow removal. And we'll see what happens in terms of how much relief we may get from that. And it may take some time, but that's, that's good news. So we'll continue to monitor that.
Ms. Schultz?
Do we happen to know if the county has qualified as well?
Yes.
So I mean, that doesn't just apply to us.
That's correct.
So that potentially, I mean, the good thing about that, as you and I spoke last week, is that hopefully that'll give a little bit of breathing room to the other side. So, thanks.
Ms. Evans?
Just to clarify, I believe we also said that that relief would probably come not immediately, but was it 18 months from now?
Yes, it will not be in this fiscal year. Likely, you know, these, these take time. We do estimate around 18 months. But at what, at some point in time when we do receive that, we'll acknowledge it and recognize it, and the board can act at that time to do what it needs to do with the funds.
So that'll be good news in a bit.
Be like a present somewhere down the road. All right, other discussion? All right, seeing none, we will go ahead and vote on the motion, which is that the school board approve revenue and expenditure adjustments as reflected in the FY 2016 third quarter budget review and as detailed in the agenda item. Those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. Item 4.0, excuse me a minute. Thank you. Item 4.02, confirmation of action taken in closed meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where the board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include action taken regarding student disciplinary matters. Board members have discussed each individual case, and at this time, will make several motions to confirm the recommended action. I call on Mr. Moon for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to excuse from attendance as school searching students identified in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 22.1-254B1.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Huff. All those in favor? That is unanimous. I call on Mr. Moon for the second motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to grant in part the school reassignment appeal of a student who brought marijuana to school and to modify the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Ms. Strauss. All those in favor? We have Darnett Kofax, McElvein, Strauss, Hines, Moon, Wilson, those opposed. Huff, Corbett Sanders, and Palczek. The motion passes. Oh, abstentions. Ms. Evans, thank you. The motion passes. Okay. Item five, the consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review, and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. Item 5.01, appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the agenda item. 5.02, authorize the division superintendent and the assistant superintendent Department of Facilities and Transportation Services, either of whom may act without the other, to take all actions necessary and appropriate in consultation with legal counsel for the school division to pursue approval of proffered condition amendment application number PCA 89D007, including negotiating, signing, and submitting the final proffer statement and any other documents on behalf of the school board. 5.03, award a contract for the Bailey's Upper Elementary School Phase II project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, RJ Crowley, Inc., in the amount of $3,180,000, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 5.04, award a contract for the Kings Park Elementary School Roof Replacement Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Orndorf &amp; Spade, Inc., in the amount of $786,987, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. Item six, new business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 6.01, award a contract for Twain Middle School Roof Replacement Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 6.02, approve the revised FY 2016 annual audit plan as detailed in the agenda item. 6.03, award a contract for Cherry Run Elementary School renovation project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. And item 6.04, adopt Policy 1203, Division Superintendent's Role, and Policy 1204, Organization Chart for the School Division, as detailed in the agenda item. Item seven, Superintendent Matters. I call on Dr. Garza.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had a great week celebrating Read Across America in honor of Dr. Seuss. I hope many of you got to read some Dr. Seuss books. I forget what tongue twisters they are, right? Creative words. So it was a lot of fun. Between the leadership team and the school board, there were over 40 schools that were visited by members of the school board and the leadership team. I visited three schools, and I want to thank Merrill Date at Forestale, Mike McCrenna at Island Creek, and Leona Smith Vance at Forest Edge. And yes, Steve Greenberger did visit his class, spent a couple of hours, actually, co-teaching with Steve, and it was a lot of fun. The students were just incredible. They're so brilliant. So it was a lot of fun. We also want to congratulate Brian Butler and his team at Mason Crest Elementary School for winning the very first of four award, which honors outstanding schools that have high levels of student achievement and successful teams of teachers and professional learning communities. And they won a grant award of $25,000 that was tied to that. So it was a very prestigious and important honor, and we congratulate he and his team. We also celebrated our Teacher of the Year, and our Principal of the Year with surprise visits to their schools. Many of you joined us, and it was, it was such fun. It was always fun to, to honor these wonderful FCPS employees, but to also surprise them, because it's always, I know, such an honor for them. So we congratulate Justine Clenna, who is the principal at Herndon Middle School, and Cory Thornblad at Kilmer Middle School. And now, we're very, very proud of them, and they go on now to compete for the Region Four Teacher of the Year and Principal of the Year. And we wish them well in that process. They are great. They're certainly wonderful examples of what great educators we have in FCPS. I've had numerous other opportunities to visit schools and visit with students, whether it's the superintendent's student advisory, which I was with those students today, with the county leadership program last night. I'm just always impressed and amazed and just inspired to be around our students in our schools. We have a lot to be proud of in FCPS. We had yet another successful Business Roundtable, packed house. We met with the social welfare and service organizations, sectors of the community. I was joined by Tammy Darnett Kofax. We want to thank Principal Pamela Brumfield, who hosted the lunch in Edison High School. Wow, it was impressive. The students were outstanding. I think everyone walked away just amazed. I want to thank Chef Glenn Walden, who, he, along with his wonderful students, prepared a really amazing gourmet meal, and they really pulled out all the stops. People were, were very impressed. Those are difficult oftentimes. It's something else that the schools have to, have to deal with. But it's so nice to be able to have, we asked how many of it ever been in Edison High School, and I think only one other person had. So great opportunity for business leaders, community leaders, to have an opportunity to visit our great schools. And then finally, on the budget, you know, it's, we try really hard to be optimistic and hopeful for fiscal year 17 resolution to our budget that would not require any additional cuts. That doesn't look to be the case at this point. But yet, I ask our community to continue to support our schools. We are getting some additional funding from the state, but I want the community to understand that that's still, even with the additional money from the state, a 3% transfer requires that we would have to cut about $54 million. That's very difficult, even with the additional state money. So the, the, the challenge is still very daunting. And I want our public to understand that we have not been saved by the state. The money has helped, but we still have a long way to go to balance our budget. So please, stay with us. We must have solutions for our schools. And we thank them, all of our champions and supporters. We know that these are very, very difficult decisions, but they're very important ones. Monday, the board will be considering and discussing the fiscal year 17 budget, the exact amount of state funding that we found out, I think, today, and we're still kind of working through. That will be discussed on Monday. So any member of the public that wishes to see kind of where that all is, I would ask them to, to pay attention to Monday's work session and the literature and documents that will be posted at that time. The board also will begin the process of starting to look at what we will potentially cut to balance the potential shortfall should that, unless, you know, we get additional money from, from the county. So thank you very much for this opportunity, and that concludes my comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Garza. Item eight, Board Committee Reports. I call on Ms. Strauss for a report on the Audit and Budget Committees.
Thank you very much. On February 24th, we had an audit committee meeting, and we received two finished audit reports. One on construction bond funds and another on asset management. The committee discussed the report and the findings, and management responded to the findings. It was the recommendation of the Auditor General with concurrence of the committee that the findings were of low risk, and therefore, these reports did not need to come to a work session for further discussion or, or action. However, there is a proposal to amend the audit plan and add another report based on cybersecurity. On March 17th, the Auditor General will be at the work session to speak to this proposed addition to the audit plan and answer any questions, the school board. And the Audit Committee has also asked the Auditor General to take a look at the possibility of a Phase II of the asset management plan. So she will come back with further recommendations on that. Both of the audits, reports are online, so the board can read the entire report with the findings and the recommendation. And also, as an update, the Auditor General will be working with us and will be at probably several more work sessions this spring as we work together to form the audit plan for the 2016-2017 school year. So that's the update on audit. On the budget, we had a work session and discussed the third quarter budget review, which we passed this evening. On February 26th, the school board met with the Board of Supervisors to go over, again, the school board's proposed advertised budget, and the county executive also included the, his proposed budget. And on March 1st, the Board of Supervisors did agree to advertise a tax rate of no higher than four cents. And we know that, it does appear that the school system will not be able to fully fund our budget. We will continue to work and work with our advocates. We will have a work session to discuss the budget again on Monday. And I know my colleagues, we will have to take a hard look at the results of the Budget Task Force. We will also be updated on the results of the General Assembly. But it does appear that it will not be sufficient to ensure that we will be able to fully fund our budget. So I do recommend my colleagues to begin to take a look at the Budget Task Force report. We will most likely have to return to that. So that is the end of my reports. Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I have a quick go-back? I just wanted to also, and I apologize, I didn't mention earlier. I do want to congratulate the school board. We were notified that they, you all have won a 2016 Magna Award from the National School Board Association. It's a very prestigious award. School board members have, have been on the board. You know, it's, it's important, and, and it's, it's not given out to very few, very few school systems. So the board won the national award for the engagement of the community around the budget. And you all will be recognized at their national conference coming up in April. So congratulations to our school board.
Thank you, Dr. Garza, and thank you for your leadership in that conversation with us. Call on Mr. Moon for a report on Governance Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Governance Committee has been working really, really hard. We met on February 29th and March 3rd to discuss about potential, this is a continuation of a continuing discussion on potential redesign of all standing committees and advisory committees. And also, we began discussing about fundraising and naming rights policies. Our work is not over yet. And full board with an opportunity, even though it's for 30 minutes on Monday, at the Monday's full-day work session, to chime in on advisory committee discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Item nine, Board Matters. I call on Ms. Darnett Kofax.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As Dr. Garza said, I was her partner at the Business Roundtable that hosted the Social Welfare and Service Organizations. I really appreciate the amazing partnership these organizations have with some of our neediest families. But I also think, as we talked about our needs in the schools, it was eye-opening for some of them to realize how needy some of our children are and how deep the pockets of poverty are in some of our schools. They continually commented on that and so willing to go the extra mile and go further. So it was, it was a wonderful experience. And I too want to thank the Edison Culinary Academy students, Chef Walden and Principal Brumfield, for an amazing lunch. It was during Read Across America Day, and they chose an international theme. Um, it was during Read Across America Day and they chose an international theme, um, and so you had several choices of appeti, three choices for appetizers or, um, three entrees and they were all wonderful and, uh, it was just a, a lovely afternoon to, to share with people. I also had the privilege of, um, working with Mr. Adam Schechter at Twain Middle School and his budding journalists, uh, for the Twain Tiger News Cruise, News Crew. Uh, they had wanted to know about the budget and they had very, as middle schoolers, had very insightful and, um, questions, detailed questions and also some fun times. And, um, I did my, uh, used my first time with a selfie stick with all of those, so I'm dating myself, but it's first time. I also had the privilege of visiting Lee High School this week to, or with Ms. Evans last week, I believe it was, to see their new ESOL programming. And the whole board, uh, seeing this at the work session on Monday and I think my colleagues, you all will be excited to see, um, the new things that are happening with this new ESOL programming. You'll be very impressed. I had fun at Read Across America at Springfield Estates and Rose Hill. And also I went back to Springfield Estates yesterday with Mr. Dade and Ms. Tyler there to see not budding journalists, but new budding Broadway stars at the Little Mermaid, um, junior show that was put on by theirs, um, their school's music teacher, Ms. Jeanette Momen, an amazing teacher. And I can say that from personal experience, my, uh, daughter had it a long time ago. I think, um, the parents should be proud of the kids, how energetic and enthusiastic they were. And if you're so inclined, there are some shows this weekend to go see, so, thank you.
Mr. McAvine.
Pass.
Ms. Hough.
I just want to thank, uh, the many schools that had me for Read Across America and also just want to announce that I'll be having office hours at the Oakden Library on Tuesday evening from six-thirty to eight and I look forward to meeting some constituents there. Thank you.
Mrs. Strauss.
Um, thank you. I too want to offer my congratulations to Justine Clenna, who is our, our Principal of the Year for Fairfax County. She is the esteemed principal at Herndon Middle School. Um, I am just delighted and it is very deserved, uh, deserved honor. She is wonderful. Her community, her, um, faculty, her parents and her teachers are so supportive of Ms. Clenna. And for those of you who don't know the process for this, um, in order to be recognized as Principal of the Year in Fairfax County, um, the nomination goes forward from your school first and that it also has to obviously pass muster with the leadership in the school. In other words, is this person truly worthy of this honor? So, um, it is a rigorous and a difficult process that people go through, so I am just very proud of Justine Clenna. And by the way, last year, the principal of Herndon High School was Principal of the Year, so, um, good things are happening in the Herndon community. And I, I also want to thank, um, all of the people that support the Herndon Schools and Douglas Tyson and everybody else. We are working very, very hard and a very cohesive community. And, um, thank you, Dr. Garza, for I know the additional support that you give to our students in our schools and that community. We're very, very proud. Um, I want to thank the Kent Gardens PTA and the Armstrong PTA. We went and talked about the budget and again, we are very grateful for our advocates and trying to help get our budget funded. Please continue to advocate, we need your help. Every amount of money that we can get means that we can sustain more programs, more teachers and teacher salaries, so please keep it up. I had the opportunity to do Read Across America at Aldrin and Hutchison, um, which was great fun. And I also represented our board at the VSB A Northeastern Regional Meeting last night at Falkir High School. Um, we were able to share a lot of information among schools in Virginia and, uh, updates from the General Assembly. And, um, then we had a very interesting presentation and discussion of, um, uh, community outreach and business partnerships. So, um, it was a very interesting evening. Thank you.
Uh, Mrs. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you. Um, I would like to first thank, uh, Principal Roger Vanderheij and his staff for hosting me, uh, not once, but twice at Walt Whitman last week, uh, especially on Saturday morning. They opened their school for Saturday school, had over a hundred and twenty-five students there and were hosting the West African, uh, Community Coalition. And I was honored to be able to meet with those parents and see how engaged they were in supporting their students. Would also like to, uh, thank the staff at Mount Vernon High School for hosting the National History Day competition last Saturday. Uh, it was a wonderful event, had a great opportunity to see the, um, exhibits and some of the documentary work that is being done for, by students across the county. Was particularly happy to see, um, Joseph McCarthy of Whitman Middle School winning the, uh, first place for an individual website design as well as, um, some of our students from Lorden Station Elementary participating in that junior group for website design. Um, I also want to, uh, welcome or invite all of our student leaders in the Mount Vernon area to come to our town hall on, uh, March sixteenth at West Potomac High School at four PM. And, um, thank you for all you do, folks.
Ms. Evans.
Thank you. I want to, uh, add my voice to note Sleep Awareness Week, um, to, um, say that, of course, uh, as Mr. Press said, for adults, it's, uh, about eight hours of sleep a night. For our teens, of course, we, um, hope that they can get nine hours of sleep a night. And, um, uh, note that daylight savings time is coming and, uh, people need to, to, um, be thinking about that as well. Um, I want to also say congratulations to Mason Crest Elementary School for their De Four Award and, uh, show that they are on the, the cover of Education Week. A lovely, lovely, uh, lovely photograph of the staff there as well. So this was a very prestigious award for that, that, oh, go ahead and applaud, amazing, yes, Mason Crest Elementary. Excellent, excellent job, Mason Crest. Uh, wonderful, wonderful school. I also enjoyed Read Across America and, uh, thank you to Glen Forest Elementary School and Sleepy Hollow Elementary School for, uh, inviting me to come and, um, read to the children there. It, it's, it's just, um, wonderful to, uh, see how engaged the children are and how much they enjoy reading. Um, I wanted to thank FCFT for, uh, having their forums, um, for our discussions and particularly for the teachers who came out on a Saturday and, uh, joined me and Karen Corbett Sanders for a wonderful discussion. It was, uh, very insightful and, uh, just, I, I appreciate the insights, uh, talking about a number of, a number of issues. Um, I thank you to the members of the Alexandria School Board for, um, joining us at Bailey's Upper Elementary School. They had asked for a tour of Bailey's Upper, which as, as you know, is our first vertical school and I appreciate that Principal Marie Lemon is, is always so wonderful about welcoming all the people who come and want to tour and see what we do at that school. Uh, so thank you to, uh, to Ms. Lemon for, uh, once again, hosting, uh, a tour group. I want to thank the advocates on the budget. Uh, we, um, are still in the middle of this process. This is not, uh, we need to continue to keep our voices heard. We will continue to work very, very hard to, uh, have the amount of revenue that we, we, um, hope to have. Uh, we are grateful to our state legislators, uh, to the General Assembly for improving the, um, the revenue coming from the state, although as Dr. Garza said, that, that will not be enough to fully fund. So, uh, we will continue to have this conversation in, uh, March, April and May. Uh, so, um, advocates, please stay very much engaged as well. And with that, I just wanted to wish everyone, uh, in a couple of weeks, we're going to have spring break, so, um, enjoy your spring break.
Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, there is one particular book I read during Read Across America Week every year. I've been doing that for a number of years. Has to do with a New York baker. And I always bring my bakers as a snack for my students when I go. And I went to a couple of second grade classes, Cardinal Forest Elementary and Glen Forest Elementary. Uh, the reason that I wanted to bring this one up was when I went into a baker shop to purchase New York bakers to take, there was one community member who saw me being there and when he heard about why I would, I was purchasing a New York baker, he paid for New York bakers. And, thank you, Mr. Thompson, who serves on Fairfax County Park Authority Board himself, by the way. That was very nice of him. Secondly, last night, I was at, uh, Virginia Commonwealth University watching a couple of basketball games. Uh, the first one was Laney Saxon Girls playing in the state final. Take him little short, uh, in winning the state championship, but they still had a great season. So congratulations to Laney Saxon Girls. But Westfield boys team captured state championship title yesterday, beating Oscar Smith. It's actually their second win over Oscar Smith because they beat, Westfield boys beat Oscar Smith in the state football championship in the December of the last year. And then doing it again in basketball last night was so much fun to watch. Congratulations to Westfield Bulldogs. And, uh, some of you, actually, last couple of nights, I didn't have much of a sleep. Two nights ago, I stayed up until three AM in the morning and last night until about four o'clock, watching on, watching live on YouTube on this match of Go game. You might have seen a couple of articles appearing on Washington Post, including a little clip in today's, on, in technology section. There's just some of you probably remember that back in nineteen, I think it was nineteen ninety-seven, IBM's, IBM's Deep Blue beat chess champion Kasparov. Twenty years later, now it's a Google's Deep Mind developed, AlphaGo was a challenging human race in the game of Go and they wanted to challenge it this time, top-notch professional player in Korea. So they were playing at one o'clock in the afternoon in Korea, which was eleven o'clock at night here, play, they usually play for about five hours and I wanted to watch that. So let me show you, those of you who do not know about this game. This is the board with a nineteen lines by nineteen with a three hundred sixty-one connecting points. This has very simple rules, but game itself can be very complex. I grew up playing this game. Uh, it's very popular in, in China and Japan and Korea, especially in China and our Chinese government wants to produce about thirty million elementary school players. Uh, this has become a part of schools' regular curriculum. Even in Fairfax County, we have some schools as after-school activities and one of the elementary school, so actually teaches this as a mini elective class. And you do this with, uh, black and white stones. White and black look like this, you alternating and playing. If anybody wants to learn from me, just, just contact me. And, so this, a, a AlphaGo, the Google mind has developed, has to challenge this top-notch professional player, Cédric Lee, for five matches. First two matches already done with, sad to human race. This artificial intelligence has finally surpassed the intelligence, top intelligence of a human race. But I still have a hope because we still have three matches left, three matches left, praying and cheering for the human race. But, but at the same time, we should be cheering about how we've been successful in developing, improving the level of artificial intelligence to finally go way beyond, above and beyond our own level. So I'll keep you posted. We got three more matches left, will be all done by Monday.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Mr. Wilson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moon. I think that we have an idea for next year's board retreat now. We can all learn to play Go, uh, and maybe resolve, uh, important issues of the board. Um, I'd like to thank Carrie Brown at Bull Run Elementary School for inviting me to come, uh, in the Read Across America and for, for Principal Brown for hosting me. Uh, but most importantly, I'd like to thank Dr. Seuss for providing reading material that would make kids enjoy even me reading to them. And thank you to the third and first grade classes that, uh, put up with me as I read through some of the classics of Dr. Seuss. Thank you.
Mrs. Schultz.
I got a list. So, um, I want to thank all of my residents who came out to the last two Saturdays of community office hours. Um, I've learned that when I have a room scheduled at a library, I need to ask for the biggest one, which is a good thing. Um, and also to the principals and, uh, leadership development staff at Robinson, West Springfield and Lake Braddock. Um, those are where our student town halls have been, um, held. Again, probably one of the best things, uh, I've ever done as a school board member and I want to thank Ms. McGlocklin for coming to me with my schools. Those are, uh, and, uh, a terrific opportunity for students to have a dialogue with their school board members and for us to understand in context how policies that either we've already implemented or, um, are considering implementing affect students, um, on the ground. So, and we'll be headed to Fairfax High School next week. Uh, I want to congratulate the FBLA students who just recently competed in the regionals and one team in particular who won the mobile app development, you know who you are, um, competition and they'll be headed to states. We often talk about our sports teams, but way to go. Um, Robinson, uh, I have a condolence to send to the Robinson community, not only to the students, but also to the staff and the loss, very sudden and tragic loss of Rick Veet, who was a softball coach. And, uh, I hope that any students or, or family or staff that are struggling, um, with that difficulty, because it did happen, um, on, uh, on school grounds, that you reach out and, um, get the help that we're providing. Uh, not that this is a very Robinson-centric set of, uh, announcements, but it is. On Wednesday, March thirtieth, there will be a parent and community meeting at Robinson. There's a consideration of putting in cameras. Um, I've made my position clear in the past. Um, I am not a fan of cameras in our schools. I understand that some people feel that there's a need for additional security for them, but, um, I am concerned about passing on, um, issues of individual liberty and teaching, um, our students well instead of watching them well. If you have concerns, um, please make sure that you go to the Wednesday, March thirtieth meeting and ask questions. I want to congratulate Laura Murphy, who is one of my constituents, for being appointed to the Fleecat Committee as my representative. And I want to thank Ann Smith, who's the principal of Key Center for inviting me. I know she's not here this evening, she had family obligations, but, um, inviting Ms. McGlocklin from the Braddock District and me for a tour of Key Center that was very, very powerful. And, um, as a special education and ACSD advocate, I definitely will, um, continue to stay in touch with that community. Uh, on Tuesday, March fifteenth, I will be making, um, an appearance at the Crosspoint HOA, um, at their request for their annual meeting. And save the date, I have for, two dates coming up in the near future, our citizen town halls, they're similar to the superintendent's listening tours, but, um, it's, it becomes a two-way street because it's not quite, uh, you don't have quite the, the broad audience. And so I do, uh, answer questions, um, and people are free to, uh, come and, and discuss anything that's going on in the community. Tuesday, March twenty-ninth, um, at the kind of northern end of the Springfield District, will be at Union Mill Elementary School. And the following Monday, April fourth, at Sangster Elementary at seven o'clock. So if you can put those on your, uh, schedule as a save the date, uh, and let people know. Uh, an announcement will go out. And I also want to thank, um, FCFT for inviting me and all the teachers who took the time to spend and have a very rigorous and insightful conversation behind closed doors and talk about things of concern having to do with salary, compensation and really share across a breadth of experiences from people who are close to retirement to brand-new teachers. I really, um, very much cherished that conversation and look forward to doing more of the same in the future.
Ms. Palchuk.
Um, so as Mr. Press can attest from glancing at my calendar, I've been busy. Um, so I'll try to be brief, um, but really want to thank people who came So I'll try to be brief, but really want to thank people who came out to my first office hours on Saturday at Panera and especially the two Marshall students who came out and were just so eloquent, I'm so proud of them. And we had really lively discussions. So I will be having those monthly for Saturday of the month. I will also be looking to expand to get to the eastern and western sides of the district. Also, we had a, I believe it was the largest turnout that in recent history at the Providence Budget Town Hall meeting last night with Supervisor Smith. I counted over 100 residents were there. So it was a great turnout, excellent citizen participation, and I hope we can continue the conversation. Really enjoyed meeting representatives from two of our big programs here, the Restorative Justice Group, and thank you, Dr. Lipp, for organizing that. Also got to meet the fabulous Rodney Taylor this morning from Food and Nutrition, very exciting. Read Across America, got to discover a new book at Providence, Little Rocha Writing Hood, very exciting. And Senator Tim Kaine came in as I was leaving, so glad our students get their leaders to come and show them the value of Dr. Seuss and reading. And Mosby Woods, thank you so much for giving me a Dr. Seuss hat to wear to join them in their celebrations, because I did not have a costume. Next year I will. And for the fabulous PTH Chili Cook-Off with Mr. Moon and Mr. McElveen, we got to be judges. It was delicious. Visited lots of high schools. Thank you so much to the principal's administration for your warm welcome. I had great discussions with every single one of them and tours. And once again, Marshall students, their leadership team had very insightful conversations about the budget and, and really showed themselves and talked about being Renaissance students. So, so proud of our kids. Our middle schools, Kilmer and Longfellow, were very welcoming, and Timber Lane PTA. And also just want to thank our All-State Honors Choir members from Fairfax County. As my friend in high school said to me, I thought all girls could sing until I met you. So very proud of you. I'm a percussionist, cannot sing, so excellent job. And just want to let the Providence and the whole community know that the, the county will be having a lines of business, I think it's an update, a meeting for county residents at several community centers. And one will be at Providence Community Center on the morning of March 19th. So thank you and have a great spring break.
Okay. And just a couple of things from Hunter Mill. Well, on Saturday, I look forward to meeting with Ms. Palchuk and some teachers from Fairfax County Federation of Teachers, thanks to their leadership for setting that up. I look forward to hearing from you all. And on Sunday, we have two very exciting STEM things going on. The Nova Mini Maker Fair is at South Lakes High School on Sunday afternoon. You really, you have to see it. I think it starts at 11:00 and goes until 5:00. And after that is the Regional Science and Engineering Fair, actually, for the whole school system. So it's a day of STEM and fun, and I'm really looking forward to it. This meeting is adjourned. I think since we have a little time...